One more time. Sound good? Check, check.
He's gonna make sure one of them works.
Just the last one? Okay, what about? Yes! Look at, look at how that glides.
We got about five minutes, guys.
I'm just worried that you're gonna step on it.
We're, no, we're not by, I'm right outside two.
So like, um, Donald's wife?
Okay, call the meeting in order.
Mayor Oliver. Mayor Oliver.
Here.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Here.
Small.
Here. Chide.
Here.
Buckingham.
Here.
Jim, get live the mic set. The button next to, uh, side. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going.
There you go. We'll get, we'll get this, uh...
We'll get it.
Done, yeah. Okay, that's all right for, let's read.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder of everyone, please turn off your cell phones. Approval of a minute.
Move by Commissioner Kaminsky that the minutes on the council meeting, October fifth, twenty twenty-five be approved and placed on file.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Kirk, read the roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Aye.
Small.
Aye.
Chide.
Nay.
Buckingham.
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck.
Aye.
Live the mic up. Much clicking green.
Oh, hang on.
You're good, but you stay there. Oh, hit it again.
There you go.
Red's good.
If you hit the button, you might turn itself off. See here. Next is public comments. I wanted to do a reminder for public comments. Three minutes per person to stand up and speak one time. Have a timer up here. When the timer goes off, please cease and take your seat. If there's more than one to speak on the same topic, please pick a spokesman. Members of the audience shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. When the council's in the middle of taking a vote or other discussion interruption from the audience will not be tolerated. And, uh, no personal attacks. These are pretty simple rules, so people should be able to follow them.
Um, I have a point of order, please, and clarification. Um, is criticism of an elected official a personal attack?
Yes, integration.
I am, yes.
No.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Oh, hit the button. No, no button. No, you got a question. Now, hit the button. There we go.
There you go, okay.
I mean, I have a, I, I have one more point of, um, clarification. If something is documented, uh, stating something that is documented, even if unpleasant, would that be a personal attack?
I think it depends on what the document is and what the nature of the, in combination with the document, the statement is. I think that would...
Okay, so if there were a document that was submitted to the city of Marcellus and viewed as, uh, and paid for by the city, it would still be a question?
I, I, I think I just have to see it. I don't think I can answer that generally.
Okay, thank you for turning on.
Sure.
Okay, anyone wish to address the council? Denise? Go up there and make sure that mic's turned on, Denise.
Hello? Yeah. Um, so, I haven't been to one of these in a while. Life has kind of kicked me in the seats, but I'm still wanting to know why we don't have a donation box, um, for the wall. We have one for the ambulance service within the building. We have one for the museum within the building, but we don't have one for the wall. So if it's a matter of not being allowed on city property, fire those and that one's not. Why are we discriminating? Um, I would, I would like to try to figure that out. I know it hasn't been a topic of discussion because I haven't been here for a while, but um, that is a question that I have. Last time it was brought up, it was stated that they were following, um, advice of attorney. Um, I don't know if you've had more time to look into that.
I, I can certainly answer that. We have reached out to the, um, organizations that are involved with the conflict wall to try and schedule a meeting, um, to get it back in the forefront of people's minds, and I think that the donation box can be addressed as part of those meetings. You know, I sent a meeting, uh, or an email out a couple of weeks ago, um, and I don't know, it's very possible I missed it, but I was waiting to hear back to see if we could coordinate a date and a time. I'm not sure if anybody else has, I don't see it, I think. Come back yet. So I think that would be...
Did we have to have a meeting to have the others?
To have the others what?
The other donations that are within the building.
I'm not familiar.
But that's what I'm getting at, it's a discriminatory issue then, because we're allowing it for some and not for all.
And, and I've raised that issue, that you want to be consistent on how you have a policy regarding donation boxes.
So you have advised to be consistent in that?
Correct.
Okay, and it's just not happening?
I'm not sure what the donation boxes are that are in the museum or, um, I'm, I'm not aware of any other donation.
It's not a donation box or QR codes?
I think the QR codes I've advised are fine.
So it's okay to put a QR code and say, hey, donate, but it's not okay to put a box?
Correct. We didn't want to have a box on, uh, public property.
Okay, so if they...
And I've advised that the policy be consistent across the board. Uh, my advice was to not have any donation boxes or donations or QR codes, because how do you distinguish what is appropriate for each organization that might be receiving donations? So that was our recommendation. But I know that when we had talked with the committee, we were going to discuss, was there some other avenues that we could look at? Um, because everybody agreed, uh, that, that they like the wall and what the purpose of the wall is and what they're trying to accomplish with the wall, so. That, we still have a plan to have a meeting and try to discuss how to handle, the best way to handle that.
Can we get that done? Because it's been about five months since it was removed.
Certainly, I'll circulate another meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Melissa?
All right, first thing I'm going to talk about is this. It is the price list. Everything, every seller in Timber's Edge, what they originally paid for their property, when they bought it, when they sold it, and a profit amount over here. Um, this apparently has been sent around to many, many people, and we've received a lot of, um, harassment, I would say, over it. Um, but I, I'm just kind of curious why, why this was put together and disseminated. We've already talked constellation. We know it didn't come from them. And I imagine you guys would be getting a call from Constellation regarding it also. I'm guessing there were no answer, no reason why it was disseminated? Okay.
All right, hang on a minute, we're, we're trying, uh...
Come up with a good story.
Okay, please have the timer. Point of order, please have the timer.
You got other stuff?
I took it upon myself to make the list. It all came from GIS. It's public information. Anybody can get it. It's online, and that's where it came from.
Okay. Um, regardless of it being public information, to put it in a list like this and spread it around to the town as if we've done something wrong?
I've spread it around the town.
Well, someone did, and someone pretty much told the town, we were being greedy. And it doesn't take into account anything that anyone put into their homes. Like, it just gives a profit amount based on our purchase price. Like, I know someone bought their house for thirty-five thousand, but then threw in another three hundred thousand, so that profit margin is pretty wrong. And I think what you did here was try to make yourself look good and try to make us look bad after all of the harassment intimidation that we've dealt with.
Anybody can get.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Well, the second, uh, topic that I want to discuss is the FOIA response I received yesterday requesting a deposit of two thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars for paper copies. Um, you guys probably got my reply to that. Um, I've also filed a PAT complaint on that, but I think those copying fees are exorbitantly, it's a, it's a lot, considering most of the documents are in digital format. Um, but I actually was very surprised that Ms. Stroutner was the one that sent this out, because most FOIs that come from the city clerk are less than professional and more like high school newsletters. Um, I guess we shouldn't expect much, because, you know, as the mayor said, um, let's see, what was his exact words? Um, oh no, this one's just about him using foul language and calling employees inappropriate names. Um, let's see, punching out, no, that's not about the city clerk, that's still about the mayor. Leslie Hart was creating a toxic work environment.
Okay, Melissa, I'm not going to allow you to attack the city clerk. You're not going to attack any of our employees.
It's public dissent, First Amendment, right. Um, the mayor spent quite some time detailing issues with Leslie Hart as an employee. I asked him who she reported to. So, my hope is that maybe someone will take a look at this HR report, the FOIs that she's been sending out, that she's been lying on, and maybe look at terminating her for the benefit of the town, because she's costing you guys money.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Please do not attack our clerk.
It's not a attack. This is my, this is public comments. I would suggest that maybe you get yourself in order. I'm not attacking the clerk. I'm making a political statement. Are you going to deny me that?
Your time is up.
Considering the TRO, I would suggest you watch yourself.
It's unfortunate, we even have to use it, but when people...
Mr. Tim Johnovich, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Nah, I said, does anybody need anything? I repeat, like, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I think we're, I think we've got a reset.
Did you recognize me? According to ordinance, he has to recognize me.
You gotta state your name.
My name's Scott Demianovich. All right, that, uh, Melissa Small, saying this conversation, would she thank you? Um, Ed Shy, if you put that list together, I'm, I'm just gonna straight up tell you, you're an idiot. My number's wrong, and several other numbers are wrong, but either that, that's neither here nor there, you're, you just, I don't know what to tell you. But I'm here today to talk about our city clerk filing a false harassment complaint against me on April twenty-second of earlier this year. She contacted the police on April twenty-second. We don't know how she contacted them, because the police report that was made by Detective Weiss only says he was advised of a complaint. And in that police report, it does not even reference even talking to the person who complained to the police, or even the person that was harassed. So if you say you're being harassed and you call the cops, you'd think they would talk to you, and that would be in the report. But Leslie Hart's address, name, and everything, it's not that it's redacted, it's just not there. It's gone. It's, it's like it never exactly happened. And, uh, I never would have even found this complaint unless the mayor, him right there, decided to give up and tell people that all these people file harassment complaints against me, and, but that's actually the only harassment complaint I found against everywhere around here. Um, but anyways, now today, I was able to, and also the body cam footage, when they went back to interview her neighbor, which is Larry Lewis, the liar, we call him now. He, uh, he, uh, we found his house on the body cam footage, and when the officer went out there to go talk to her. Little, and that body cam footage was not even tagged in the investigation. I had to FOIA the whole day, the whole day's worth of video and find that, and it is the most blurred out picture in my life I've ever seen. Has anybody watched the news and seen a blurred out, uh, diet, uh, body cam footage, video? Have you ever seen one that wrecked? No, because the police of Marcellus, Detective Weiss is a liar, and he falsified that police report to help cover up Leslie Hart's false complaint, and I have the proof. Where's my shit? I got my, I got my bank statement.
Okay, Denise?
Oh, I apologize. Oh, stop my time, stop my time, stop my time, stop my time.
No.
I've, I've told you about, uh, first before.
Yes, Callan. I, I understand, Callan.
I clapped.
I, I understand, I apologize for that.
You want to set me up because I clapped?
You know, I try to watch my mayor language, but unrespectfully, I'm not being respectful. Okay, here's my bank statements from that day proving that in fact I was in Arizona. I was not at Leslie Hart's house. Why would Leslie Hart wait two days after me being at her house harassing her? Why would she wait two days to call? Anybody's gonna call right then and there, right then and there. Leslie Hart is nothing but a liar and filed a false police report, and the Marcellus Police Department is getting sued. Buckingham, because you signed off on it, you're getting sued now too. Detective Weiss is getting sued.
Scott, your time's up. Sit down. Thank you.
Uh, you can also be respectful to me, sir.
Todd?
Ignorant.
Mayor. Uh, Mr. Tim Johnovich, thank you. Uh, Mayor, let's continue on if there's, if there's any other public comments, please.
Okay, and we'll get on to what we should be doing all along. Uh, number one.
Move by Commissioner Kaminsky that the accounts payable for the...
Jim, get live out the mics. No. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going.
Move by Commissioner Kaminsky, the accounts payable for the first half of November in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-six cents be approved, and a warrant be drawn on the city treasury for the several amounts.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Uh, excuse me if I can't, uh, rattle off real quick, I just came from Morris Hospital, but we'll, we'll try to get it done. Advanced, uh, information mapping system, GIS mapping, six thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. B and G Electric, the parking lot electrical work, seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Brennan Tag, Mid-South Aqua Mad Fluoride, Jason Rix's department, five thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and twelve cents. Gas and Open Associates, uh, refrigeration samples, twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. Marcel Sheet Metal, uh, fall and winter, uh, prevent and maintenance, uh, four thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. Marcel's Public Library, this is their property tax distribution, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, twenty-five cents. There you go, Jeff, put that in book. Morton Salt, uh, Bolt Safety Salt, seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars, seventy-five cents. Uh, mixed emergency lighting and more, vehicle, vehicle retrofits for one of our newer squad cars, four thousand, fifty dollars and five cents. Any questions?
No other discussion. Kirk, read the roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Aye.
Small.
Aye.
Chide.
No.
Buckingham.
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck.
Aye. Number two.
Move by Commissioner Kaminsky that the payroll for the first half of November in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and one cent be approved, and a warrant be drawn on the city treasury for the several amounts.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Uh, it's pretty typical payroll, Mayor. We didn't get any snow yet.
Tried. Uh, Kirk, read the roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Aye.
Small.
Aye.
Chide.
Abstain.
Buckingham.
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck.
Aye. Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, Mayor and I attended, uh, the Bolingbrook, uh, CHO, hospital, state meeting to, uh, approve the, uh, additional ICUs, and, uh, it was a pretty big eye-opening. A lot of people talked. I respect everybody that has an opinion, but I still say at the end of the day, we're elected officials, and if we don't have any ICUs and people can't go to Ottawa, that that's gonna put a strain on our EMS system and ambulance guys, so, and fire departments. So I just think at this point is, I'm very disappointed, and I hope they reconsider. I know they're moving everything to their Peru facilities, but I, I, I'm praying that they, they do something back in Ottawa in the next near future, so, that's it, Mayor.
Okay, I don't know, uh, I had this on my sheet, but as long as we're on it, I don't know what the next step is gonna be, or if there is gonna be a next step.
I don't, I don't know.
If they're gonna appeal it, or if they're gonna challenge it in court, we'll just have to wait and see, but we fell one vote shy. It's, it's unfortunate, but it is what it is, as they say.
How many public meetings were there in consideration of that? Do we have a ballpark?
Well, I mean, I, I'm not officially, I can't tell you, like, exactly, but I know they had one where they presented all their evidence, and then it took them like nine months to put another meeting together to have the packet of the nays versus the ayes, so, and that was a whole, uh, the whole long drag out party.
I think I was at three at the school.
Yeah, but those are, I mean, he's talking about state meetings.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they, yeah, they turned it in once, got pushed back, and then it, they...
Yeah, one of the state meetings was at Central School, and a few months ago, I was scheduled to go to Peoria to talk, and they canceled it.
Right.
Scheduled this one, so, this second one, I think.
Yeah, this is the second meeting they put together with the state IDP.
So multiple meetings on important issues or what?
Yeah, so when they do these meetings in Bolingbrook, every, every nine, uh, nine, nine to ten weeks, it's multiple facilities, not just OSN.
Sure, yeah.
It was a pretty nice eye-opening procedure on how that all process works, so. It was a good trip on my, besides losing. I know, but...
Uh, anything else?
I'm sorry, man, that's it.
Uh, Commissioner Small.
Um, don't have much, just slow down on Broadway. Still, that seems to be an issue that people have lost my attention in the school zones especially, um, with the buses and the kids crossing. Please just slow down, find your speed over there, and, um, keep an eye out for the little ones. They like to dodge in and out of the road, especially when they're crossing, and we just want to make sure that all of our little ones are safe.
Is that it? You got number two?
Move by Commissioner, move by Commissioner Small, that Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty, a resolution authorizing a mutual release and settlement agreement with Carl Eccles be adopted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that. I'll second that, Mayor.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I can explain if you'll turn me on.
Uh, you gotta hit the button first?
Oh, I do.
And then, good.
There we go.
Perfect. Yes, it's, uh, was stated by the motion, this is a mutual release and settlement agreement with, uh, Mr. Eccles, and, uh, it was the recommendation of Corporation Council, uh, filing, uh, mediation that we settle for essentially the cost of defense.
Is there a non-disclosure agreement as part of the settlement?
I believe they did sign everything, but there can be no information released and/or obtained regarding it as if it was a personal matter.
Almost funny.
Uh, I beg your pardon, sir.
Do you have anything, oh, Kirk, read the roll?
In a second, just a moment.
Yeah, Kirk, read the roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Aye.
Small.
Aye.
Chide.
No.
Buckingham.
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck.
Aye.
Hit your button. All right, Jim, get, get a hot mic. There you go.
Um, Commissioner Shy.
So, there seems to be a level of viewpoint discrimination as to how the rules are enforced regarding personal attacks. At the last meeting, I was explaining how I wanted there to be a, uh, multiple public hearings. It wasn't so much that we couldn't have an agreement. When a multi-billion dollar company wants to set up shop, you're really not going to stop them. However, we could have been more open. We could have had multiple public hearings, particularly, particularly when people weren't at work. Thought that was a fair statement, and I was cut off, and only after I defended myself did the gavel come out. Additionally, after the police report was filed on Mr. Demianovich, I had a city employee come to my employer to make the complaint that I was taking pictures at their house. to make the complaint that I was taking pictures at their house, which was untrue. I immediately sent that information to Commissioner Kaminsky. So, it's just in line with a pattern of retaliation that, um, is extraordinarily unfortunate. Uh, we have a concave mirror, uh, concave, convex, I don't know, concave, let's say concave, uh, my failed physics. Uh, however, there is a, there's a mirror up at Wallace and Aurora, uh, so, such that we have that blind curve there. Okay, because of the, because of the fence, so I'm hoping that will ameliorate safety concerns there. So I appreciate the, appreciate that matter. Um, I certainly, uh, also would like to, uh, uh, thank the, um, resi-, um, the resident who brought to my attention that, we could do better with the crosswalks and signage for pedestrians coming into and out of this building. And I will be speaking with, uh, the, um, employees to that effect. Um, and now there's a couple of, uh, matters of paying for the maintenance program for MFT and if that could be done, I should greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Shy, that Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-one, a resolution for BLR one-four-two-two-zero, the twenty-two-five street maintenance be adopted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Clerk Reed, roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Shy?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Shy, that a change in plans for BLR one-three-two-one-zero for street maintenance twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero zero-zero dash GM adding twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-eight cents to the contract be approved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
We got, I mean, do we know what was the twenty thousand dollars for? Liven them up. Hit the button, Mike.
Uh, well, drive, well, since, since I'm on, yeah, driveway to the sidewalks, uh, I need, because they have sidewalks there, um, as well as shoulders.
Shoulders. It's a, it's a unit price contract, so the contractor gives you a unit price, there's so much asphalt. You do use more asphalt, the price goes up.
Yeah, I understand.
So, the contract went up about, uh, twenty-one thousand dollars. This is a form required by IDOT to go in, all their paperwork. As I said, there's much, much paperwork involved in this.
Thank you, Michaels.
Clerk Reed, roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Shy?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Shy, that final pay estimate BLR one-three-two-three-zero to universal asphalt in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and twelve cents be approved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
This goes along with the first two, before that. Hang the contract for what you get.
Clerk Reed, roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Shy?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckingham?
Yeah, it's got a couple of things. I said, uh, Mike, can you tell us, I meant to ask you, are we done up on Bryant Avenue with your attachment on, is that complete? It's about ninety-five percent complete, we're working on, uh, doing some seating items and some, um, rip wrap. Alright, that was my first thing, that's what, thank you. And I will say that the rip wrap went way over, like I talked about unit prices, so the cost is about, far as I know right now, about ten thousand dollars more than what the bid was. Made a lot more seating too.
Right.
Most good.
Actually, I think they might be done, 'cause I seen a lot of rip wrap in there and I seen a lot of that netting they put out, so unless they got something that isn't visible, I think they're, they might be totally done.
Have we considered putting like some sort of barrier or pylon just in the off chance that somebody drives into it?
We can look into that, but I think as far as the traffic warrants going, there's a far, a big enough, um, flatter.
Yeah, just don't, I, I have just, I have, I have visions of holding my ear and watch this, so, I mean, if there was like some way to have like a thousand, I mean, if, if it could be done in a cost-effective way, I'd like us to consider it, it's just...
Are you talking like a guardrail?
Well, either a guardrail or just a couple of locks or something, like pylons, like they have it like the, uh, at the Target. Again, I'm just talking here, I don't, uh, not presuming of the, you know.
They're calling bollards.
What's that?
Bollards.
Yes, sir. I mean, could we, like ballpark what that might, might, what that might look like?
That's the money you wanna put in?
Right, well, the hole's been there since.
Never happened yet, went that way.
Well, I mean, actually, um, uh, just so, just so you kinda know where my thinking is, um, in, uh, in my college and just, uh, bear with me, just what's on my brain. Um, my college dug out a lake, made it deeper, um, and someone did, um, fall, went and drowned. So, um, just, if there's a safety precaution we could take for the sake of limiting liability, I, I would just like us to consider that.
We'll, we'll look into that, um, now as far as going into a pond where they...
Yeah, I realize the pylon won't stop that.
It's dry.
Yeah.
Get water for a little while. There's a lot of dirt around there, like somebody goes off with a car, they're probably gonna sink in the dirt, but we'll look out.
So, they'll die that way.
Only get stuck before they go over the cliff.
Yeah, yeah, and again, and again, just, I, just that's the genesis of why I have the, why that was in my head, and thank you.
We'll look at it.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else?
Yeah, just a reminder, sooner or later, before we get to snow, a reminder about the two in snowfall. Jack, you're, where you live at, for your snow rolls? Number three, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
Number one, under me.
Moved by Mayor Hollenbeck, that the special event permit application for Holiday Magic Lighted Santa Parade be approved and a permit can be waived.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Clerk Reed, roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Shy?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Uh, city engineer?
We've got a couple of things there. Uh, first of all, the city's bond rating has been increased from A to A-plus. There's a many, many months' work by the city clerk and the city treasurer putting all the documents together. I sat in on some of those meetings and they asked, you wouldn't believe, type of questions. Basically, it comes down to it, shows there's no corruption, misappropriation of funds, anything like that, because that bait rating would not go up, okay? It happened, they found any parts of it. And the second thing is that the, with the CPA, who buys our books every year, does the city of Marcell's books first because they know that they're in order. Again, that's a strong, uh, compliment to the city clerk and the city treasurer for keeping those books in order. And one of the things that they do is, when they have a question about something, as far as financial goals, they call the auditor. Get it straightened out, make sure it's put up the right way or, uh, taken care of, so. And then the final thing is, uh, we've had a meeting today, phone meeting today with our IDOT auditor. He pulled out, uh, six items and four of those are just, uh, when we time things, do them MFT resolutions, uh, turning in papers at the end of the year. We haven't had a, uh, audit by IDOT in years. And when they say this, this thing is due within a hundred and twenty days afterwards, they call us and they say, hey, where's that report? So we send a report in, they don't say, hey, it should've gone there, whatever. Long story short, I really appreciate this audit. This is really in-depth, he pointed out a lot of things that helped us and talked about Cheryl and Leslie and will move forward, but changed his procedures, so they're right in, we're no, no violations. It's just, uh, some auditing, uh, procedures, MFT procedures, so, that's it.
Righty, Mike, I, uh, oh, before I speak, city attorney, do you have anything?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so, along with what Mike says, there's no doubt that our girls at City Hall worked their butts off and they're underappreciated, undervalued. If they didn't have all their ducks in a row and have this paperwork, our, we wouldn't have got our bond rating increase. We wouldn't have passed, uh, I know you think it's funny Denise, but I'm proud of our people. And I don't know why you think we gotta sit there and do offers and flatter.
This is so you.
No personal tax, Mayor, please. No personal tax.
So, uh...
I'm not the only one giggling.
It's, it's hard for us to conduct business when we have dissensions, so, uh, I think that that's, uh...
You got something to say?
We get that, uh...
Come on, big boy.
I've told you how many times. Rules, the rules mean nothing to you.
They mean nothing to you.
So, the bond rating, the, uh...
Sexual harassment.
Sexual, or, uh, the, uh...
Oh, you'll hold such a low note.
The MFT audit, I mean, that, that speaks volume for the work our people do.
As I said, I've been here a long, long time, it's the first time I've had an audit of this in depth. And, and the auditor told us, he's out of Chicago, he told us that, uh, it's supposed to do it about every five years on, on this in-depth, but, uh, you know, the district office would do audits generally every year. And the, the findings were minor, minor, minor. Again, these are minor, mostly it's procedural, so, um...
Well...
Yeah, I'm happy we did it.
Knowing how the state does things, I'm sure they probably at some point in times changed procedures and we didn't know about it.
Well, he's just, he's just, the BLR book is about two thousand pages long, all the regulations.
And we don't, we're, we know that inside now.
Right. Even if he didn't know.
Yeah, most of them don't. Uh... So a couple other things, I'm very proud of our building. We actually just had a gentleman come in today, uh, he had a pretty lengthy story, but I'll try to shorten it down, but he has some work done on his car and he needed to drive it five hundred miles, so he thought he'd take a ride up here to the wall and see his son's name on the wall. And, uh, so what, he was out and looked at the wall and then he happened to turn around and noticed in front of the building said City of Marcell's. So he come in and he told Cheryl it was so comforting and gratifying to see the city now occupying the building that he knows that the wall and the museum's gonna be safe. He said he was really concerned when the building was empty, if somebody else bought it, you know, what would happen with the stuff, so... That's as far as the wall goes. The Marcell's Nursing Service has really stepped up their services to the public after the move. They have, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays, they have a Move at Marcell's exercise class from nine to eleven. Hopefully someday, when I'm not in Bolingbrook or somewhere else, I can, uh, participate.
Are donations accepted at those meetings?
I'm not sure. Uh, they've had two vaccine clinics and health and wellness clinics. Grand Ridge Tractor Ride utilized a community room for coffee and donuts and, uh, use the restaurant facilities, so you know, community rooms stand busy, we're providing services to our residents, our taxpayers, so I'm very proud that, uh, our residents can get something in return out of that. There have been many visitors, uh, come into City Hall, go through the museum during the week. Everyone I talked to said that we couldn't have planned this building and the location any better if we wanted to. It's just the way everything worked out, so, uh, being a Christian, I'm gonna put it on a higher power that, uh, all this come together for a reason. Um, and then we already talked about the OSF and I'll keep everybody posted if there's gonna be another step. And, uh, want to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Buckingham, the city council now adjourned.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Clerk Reed, roll.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Aye.
Small?
Aye.
Shy?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Aye.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
I'm sorry, who did the best, it could, I don't know, it's gonna be all on video. I don't care.
Gentlemen.
Hi Denise, how are you? You got a Denise, I'm a Denise.
Yeah, no, there's two Denises, two Denises.
I know when he was yelling at you, I thought I was drunk.
Yo, no, no, no. God, of course you put my property down, she's a house.
Okay Denise, Denise.
And they out there, they don't do like two, they do it every six months, it's like, mark is mark. You have a great one.